Cinda Brod?
Here.
Julia Tumarki-Pubro?
Present.
Mr. Harland?
Here.
Mr. Kirk?
Present.
Dr. Ritt? Dr. Schaefer?
Here.
Mr. Schrod?
Here.
All right, thanks Jared. I do not have a board president message. I do want to welcome everybody tonight and thank you all for coming out. Jared's retrieving the sign in sheet. So we'll give him just a minute. Okay, Cam Berger has signed up for public comment. Go ahead, Cam.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to address the board and those people in the audience today, as well as anybody else who would, uh, Jared have on the record. You know, according to the, uh, the June 26th, uh, school board meeting, the board was pleased to move forward with a local business for just over $15,000 during the contract period versus the proposals that were otherwise presented, or, you know, to the, uh, to the district. Uh, I'd like it to be confirmed that Burger Office Systems again is a local business for more than 30 years and been a taxpayer for over 25 years. Uh, it was suggested it might be renting my building. Uh, I wish to qualify that I own the building and, and I do pay taxes. Uh, the $15,000 delta that was, uh, openly did not include, uh, some items that should have been addressed up to $6,000 more as far as summer waivers, as well as the cost of returning the competitive solution after the lease. Burger Office Systems utilized state and local contract pricing. The pricing was a flat rate where no variable increase in the volumes, the cost of the district would not have increased. It should be noted that Burger Office and Xerox supports several other local districts. I mentioned those in the last meeting. I suggest the minutes properly affect the additional costs should the board still wish to move forward with the Henry Hall proposal. Henry Hall is good business. The proposal outlined also included numerous technological advantages that I don't know if were considered in the decision. Burger Office Systems, Xerox has served the school district for all of 30-plus years and even before I was tenured in this business. I've been in business and provide highly responsive and quality service and that be attested by those in the district. It's truly been my pleasure to support the district and those within the district. Jared being here, and I look forward to the opportunity in the future. I appreciate that.
Okay, thank you, Cam.
Thank you.
Anybody here from IAEA, ASME, STA, or STUCO? Nothing heard. Superintendent's report, Rob, you're up.
I just have a brief report. Uh, we were invited, our, our district was invited to be part of the Pennsylvania School Study Council to look at principal development and retention plans. Um, as you know, there's a teacher shortage that's facing the Commonwealth, and it's pretty severe. Uh, you know, we actually have more people earned emergency certifications last year than actual certifications from universities and, uh, from the, the state. So we are anticipating some hiring problems along with that teacher shortage is going to become a principal and administrator shortage as well. Pennsylvania School Study Council works out of Penn State and they've asked us to attend and talk about how we could better train principals, retain principals, support principals in their growth because administrators are actually leaving the, the profession at a faster rate than teachers, and teachers are leaving at a pretty long rate lately. So, um, yeah, it was an honor to be there. We started our work there today, actually. Um, so that's one thing. The other thing I just want to recognize, Mrs. Urbani, um, she was interviewed, uh, in, uh, by, uh, an online blog that has actually caught some national attentions for the work that she's doing at Mount St. Joseph's University where she's studying to become a doctorate in, uh, a PhD in the science of reading, which is a cutting-edge, uh, program. And, uh, she's been working very, very hard, taking several classes a semester on top of what she's doing, and, uh, she deserves the national attention. So we, we retweeted it and we'll repost something. We'll put something on our website, uh, for that. I just thought it was a nice article that, uh, we need to share with everyone and, and recognize her work because, you know, again, it's kind of the tip of the spear here. A lot of the, the trends that are coming from the state are, were already established here at Indiana. Um, and so we should celebrate that.
Very good.
So, one follow-up maybe comment with your comments about teacher shortage?
Yes, sir.
From what, as a board member sitting and listening to the amount of people that are applying for our jobs here in our district, I don't want the media going out and saying that we have a big teacher shortage here. I hear that we get dozens, if not over 100 applicants for positions.
That's a fair point. So yes, absolutely.
But, yeah.
Yeah, that's a great point.
I didn't want everybody leaving here thinking that.
No, we've been okay. The board has done a great job supporting staff and supporting the teachers, and we are, the teacher contract here does attract people to this district. Uh, we, we have not felt the same pinch that other districts are feeling. Other districts are, simply can't fill positions. You know, they, you know, um, you know, the, especially the specific, the niche positions like chemistry, physics, math, there's just no applicants, you know, so.
Other places.
Other places, and that we, our numbers of applicants has dropped, but we still have a pretty good cushion. We're, we're doing okay here as far as, as applicants.
But I think the other part of that too, Rob, is, um, not only are there fewer applicants available, but the quality of the applications is, has, has decreased.
And that's across the Commonwealth, sir. Yes, absolutely. Yeah, there's a lot, you know, and it's, this is something that we're going to feel the pinch eventually. We haven't felt it as much as the other districts now, but, you know, over the next 10 years, this Commonwealth is going to have to make some serious decisions about, you know, what they're going to do to incentivize students to go into this profession because it's really become almost a, you know, an unattractive position and, or a profession to pursue. And it's, and it's our fault. We need to start telling kids, this is something you want to go into. This is a rewarding position. This is a, this is a profession that changes people's lives and it's very, very important, you know, so.
The irony is that our state educate, higher education system, the 13-member colleges, the majority of those all started out not as universities, but as state teacher colleges. And I believe that was, was what was on my mother's diploma when she graduated.
Sure.
Because it was Indiana State Teachers College.
Teachers College.
And yet somehow, not only the districts, but the universities or these colleges have kind of lost that focus as well.
And I think it's been part of the pool here of good faculty is because a lot of them have been trained at Indiana University of Pennsylvania, which traditionally had an excellent state teachers college. So we're fortunate in that respect.
100%. And, and it was an honor to be invited to the Pennsylvania School Council's study on, you know, principal development.
And Dr. Ritt just ran the, she was dean of education, acting dean. So she did a great job.
Sure. Anything else?
No, sir.
Okay. Uh, Ron Rapac is not going to grace us with his presence tonight, so there's no solicitors report. There's no presentation. We're down to item three, approval of minutes and agenda.
Move to approve the minutes and agenda.
Second.
Moved in second. Questions, comments, or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion's carry. Okay, board reports. I'm up first, actually. Uh, we did have a JOC meeting. I think I sent a copy of this out to all the board members. Excuse me. Uh, but at the last meeting, we reviewed and approved the ICTC budget. Had something here related to the catastrophic mass casualty event?
Uh, yeah, we are working together. Um, the ICTC is hosting an event where the superintendents from all the Indiana area school districts are talking about, um, reunification plans. If there was a catastrophic event, we realized that a recent training that we went to that no, no district would be capable or in any position to reunify their students with their, with their parents if there was some sort of terrible event that take place just because of the emotion, everyone would be emotionally compromised or responding to the emergency. So, um, it became very clear with that partnership that we're going to work together to, to help each other in those situations. So it's just a partnership we're working on, um, to just be there for each other when an emergency would occur.
Very good. Thank you. Uh, that concludes my report from the ICTC. Cinda, do you have anything from Sue on the IU 28?
No, and I don't. Does she have an alternate? I don't think she does.
Okay. Well, we'll ask her for the next, at the next meeting, uh, to report out on that. And Tammy, uh, you're up. I'm sorry?
I think Tammy was the alternate.
Oh, so they just switched, they just switched positions. I, okay.
Tammy, you're not, you're not on, online tonight? Okay, so we're moving on. Tom, uh, item five, academic and extracurricular.
Uh, no committee meeting, so we can move right into the motions. Um, I'd like to take 5-2, 5-3, 5-4, 5-5, 5-6, 5-7, 5-8, and 5-9 as written. If there's no objection, as consent.
Second.
Okay, moved in second, 5-2 through 5-9 inclusive. Questions, comments, or discussion? Rob, is there anything you want to add to this?
Uh, just to, little touch the 5-2 deals with the policy, the handbook changes that the administration's been working on. Most of those changes are semantics or, uh, or small adjustments. Um, there's nothing that's monumental there. The big change is that we're going to send those handbooks out digitally, um, instead of paper copies. That's a, that's going to be a pretty significant cost savings to the district. That'll save us about $5,000 a year. We have that bright arrow system that sends it right to this, the parent's email or, or cellphone. We figure we should utilize that. So we're asking to print 150 copies instead of, you know, 2,000 copies just to, uh, you know, to keep the cost down for the district.
But there's still a signature page if they parent.
It will be done electronically. Mr. Rapac says that there will be a, we can send an electronic signature that will replace that where the parent can come in and sign it, um, on a paper copy. Either way.
Okay.
They both are, they both are legal.
Can the students take a paper copy home and get it signed and bring it back, or does the parent have to come?
Either way. We'll have, what, 25 copies available in each building for any, any parent or student who wants it. The parent requests it, we'll send it home with the kid. Or if, uh, they want to come and pick it up, we'll make it, we're here to, we're here to serve.
And this is a, this is the first year of that, so we're kind of, we're kind of feeling a way through.
It is, it is a little bit of a change, but I think it's, I think it's one that makes sense with, you know, given the, given the direction of society. I mean, that's where most people do their business now is online. So, and for those that are, want the paper in their hand and want to hold it, we'll make that accommodation for sure.
I would ask, um, the folks from the press here to, um, kind of highlight that in your reporting because it is a new change and we're, we're trying to, uh, get the word out to the, uh, parents and the students. Uh, we'll be doing a lot of that internally, uh, but the more we can get the word out on it, why, it would be greatly appreciated.
You're talking about 5-2?
5-2, yes, sir. The fact that, the fact that there would be no, um, there won't be hard copies, um, printed, that the majority of them will be distributed electronically, but hard copies would be available for those who would request it.
Um, I'd also like to point out in 5-5 that the, uh, across the board varsity games are now $5 each, but it's still a $10 family rate.
Yes, sir.
And there's a student rate of $2, except the football was $1.
There is indeed, and that matches the Whipple averages, sir. So Mr. Rome went out and found out that, found out what the average was among the Whipple, so we matched that price. It's $5 across the board for attendance at all parts of the events, but all the student rates and families did.
And we matched the average, we didn't match the high.
No, sir.
So if a student doesn't do a pre-sale for a football, then it's $2?
$2 to get it.
Okay, because that's not listed.
It's not?
No.
I'm sorry. We fix that.
Do you make that change, please?
Yes, sir.
Is if they don't do the pre-sale and say, uh, save a dollar, they can't come in at all?
Then $5, they can come in.
Or they, or, yeah, $2 or $5. There you go.
Can we bring that back to the next, because I don't know that at the gate they have different prices.
Uh, that's true.
I'm not sure. I think they might be all $5 at the gate, regardless of whether you're a student or not.
So like a varsity, varsity wrestling student ticket is pre-sale only? Are student tickets pre-sale only? I guess that's my question.
No, they're not, but I want to, varsity may be, varsity football games may be a little bit different at the gate than the other ones, so.
We'll find out.
Yeah, we'll clarify that and bring it back. There's not a football game or anything before the next.
Then let's, um, let's table 5-5.
Okay.
Okay. Do I need a second on that?
Yes, I'll, yeah, do you do that now?
Yes.
Yeah, we're taking another consent.
Okay.
Table 5-5.
All right, all those in favor, tabling 5-5?
Aye.
5. Those opposed? Motion carries.
It was awful confusing reading through all those tickets and stuff.
I thought it was pretty simple. It's $5 or $2, except $1. And then, okay. Um, on 5-6, Rob, um, the, uh, the list isn't, isn't attached.
It's not?
No. So when you get a chance to touch that, would you, please?
Sir.
Is it the same list as last year?
No changes, yeah.
Yeah.
It was on.
It, it was on, it was on our, but it's not on.
Yeah.
The public. Oh, the public. Okay. So, so from 5-2 to 5-9, accepting 5-5.
So before we go to the vote on those, um, Rob, would you very briefly explain?
Complementary tickets?
No, no, 5.9.
Oh, 5.9. Um, oh yeah, this is a, uh, so 5.9, sir, deals with a scheduling expert, um, that is going to help us with our secondary schedule. So our MTSS work, we, we received a grant from Patton, which is PDE, a subsidiary of PDE, and they are working on our, our multi-tiered systems to support it to junior high. One of their recommendations is that we work with a scheduling expert, uh, whose name is Dr. Michael Reddick. He did some work at Duke University. He's from the South, and he is, um, coming to Pennsylvania in November. Um, he's very difficult to schedule and he's very, he's very expensive. It costs $4,000 for him to come up, um, and work with us for a day. The grant will cover that, but the way the grant works is that you have to spend the money and then request it to be reimbursed, and they have to grant the reimbursement. I'm, I'm a little bit hesitant spending $4,000 of the taxpayers' money on one day unless I have a guarantee that it's being covered. So I'm kind of flipping around saying, we will pass this motion based on good faith that they're going to cover the cost. If they refuse to cover the cost, then we'll cancel the contract, you know, because I just can't justify that expense without the use of the grant. It's very, it's something we want to do. We think we could gain some value from that. However, we want to hedge our bet a little bit, sir, on the finances, because I don't want to, I don't want to foot the bill for that.
Agreed. Okay, questions, comments on 5-2, 3, 4, 6, 7, 8, and 9? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion's carry. Cinda, all CIN personnel.
There's no committee meeting report, and I would like to take 6-2 through 6-7 as consent. 6-2 is resignation of support staff. Emily Briggs at their educator is, uh, resigning. Savannah Fields, custodian, is also resigning. Approval of job description for operational principal as presented. Appointment of Mr. Douglas Johnson to the position of operational, operational principal at the high school at a salary of $106,000. Appointment of principal, Mr. Donald Bowers, to the position of operational principal assigned to the junior high Eisenhower and Horace Mann as needed at a salary of $105,000. That the board approves the addendum to the business manager contract at a salary of And an Act 93 contract revision, excuse me, that approves the revised addendum A of the Act 93 contract that went into effect July 1st, 2023, as presented.
Okay, moved in second. Questions, comments, or discussion on 6-2 through 6-7? Anything, Rob, you want to add?
Uh, no, this is mostly as a result of our realignment of our administrative staff to make, you know, to increase efficiency and, and, uh, you know, just, uh, try to, you know, reallocate our resources to be as efficient as possible and as, as cost-effective as possible, sir. So, uh, we're, we're, that requires the reallocation or the reassignment of a couple of principals and, uh, change in their duties, and with those changes come slight adjustments to their salaries. Okay.
Will we have any kind of, um, message to parents about why this is happening and operational principal defined?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, we're going to send out something tomorrow to the, to the families to let them know these changes, and that, in that, we'll define what an operational principal is. For those here, an operational principal is just that, is a, is someone who focuses on the daily operations of the building, just making sure that they respond to any safety needs, any disciplinary needs, anything that pops up. They will then work hand in hand with the head principal, who will be more focused on the academics of that building. Um, but the, the operational principal just gives that principal the authority to act without having to go through that extra check, just to make sure that they can respond quickly and efficiently to any situation that pops up.
And probably two other things would be, there is going to be a reduction in expenditures overall with this realignment.
Yes, sir. This will, this will result in about $149,000 in, in reduced expenditures.
Right. And we think we're going to become more efficient though, too. So it's a double positive, I guess.
Yeah, correct. It can be, yeah, it should be. I mean, it's, it is, uh, the most efficient thing we can do. Um, you know, I think it's, it should result in, uh, us being just as effective as before, only, you know, everyone should be safe and taken care of. Shouldn't be any problems.
Yeah, I think on an operational level and an efficiency level, this is a wise move. I think it should work out very well.
And it actually eliminates one position that we had prior to this realignment.
Correct. We're not going to fill the, the position vacated by Mr. Edmondson, so that will, so that's where the savings will come from.
And the whole team's on board from what you're telling us.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Question, further questions, comments, or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Nothing heard. Motion's carry. Terry.
There's really no committee meeting report. The, the board did, and the administration did hold a workshop, uh, regarding Eisenhower and the meeting with our architect, Euchard Horn, uh, just to go over the plans and things ahead of the bid, which is coming up hopefully later this month. And they basically, the architect had given us a 95% complete set of plans, so that's what the workshop is about.
Terry, I, I want to also point out that 7.3 is, um, a part of that, um, overall Eisenhower project, that we want to go in there and get the asbestos removed prior to getting contractors in there to do any of the other work.
Right. Yeah, it's been a goal from the beginning. So, we could take 7.3, 7.7.3 is what you were just talking about. The vacant bids for the Eisenhower, uh, building, and the cost is $70,050, which is, I think, less than what we were anticipating that cost to be. 7.4 Eisenhower bids. We're going to, uh, as I just mentioned, the schedule shows that we're going to bid the renovation project Eisenhower on July 28th. East Pike, as everybody knows, we've been doing so, a project there, so there is a slight adjustment to the contract cost there, $4,624.73. And then 7.5 is the Salzgiver easement agreement. It, Salz, uh, ICAP is renovating in a new location, and they need internet service provided to them from Salzgiver. So they, they have to go through the Ben Franklin property, so that's what 7.5 is.
Just a correction, Mr. President, pointing out there's two 7.4, so East Pike would be 7.5, and Salzgiver would be 7.6.
6, okay.
Do you need a motion for that?
So this easement would be on the south end?
Um.
With a lot.
The, the easement will be on the south end in the flood plain.
Do we have, do we have, do we have a second on his motions?
Second.
Okay, it's moved in second. Now go ahead, Tom, with your comment.
The easement is, um, is on the south end of Ben Franklin in the flood plain, so it's out of any building footprint. But they also, one of the clauses will be that they relocate it if we decide to do something there similar to what we would have on a gas company.
And, um, Jared, on 7.5, the East Pike change order, could you maybe explain what, what that change order actually, um, actually is?
Um, this one is for the.
Block.
The.
The block.
Redoing block work within some of the walls that were, um, getting redone as part of the back office renovation, um, trying to reline with some of the block that had been there either during the 1990 renovation, 1999 renovation, or the original that just, um, were kind of going every which way. In order to build the wall properly, they had to demolish some of it and put new up. So it was completely unforeseen. It was behind everything, nothing that, um, the architects ahead of time could have done.
Essentially, they're correct, correcting a small error or a small, um, misstep that was made during the last renovation or during the original construction.
With the block walls.
Okay. Any other questions, comments, or discussion on these items?
Just have one more. On the release of the documents, the bid might not go out exactly on July 28th, right? It might, the layers definitely going out on 28th.
I think we're shooting for August 1st. So, uh, July 28th is a Friday. If we get everything by then, my hope is to release the documents or send them to, um, construction houses, the burial families, particularly doing, anybody who reaches out, have something available by August 1st.
Um, are you planning on, um, advertising prior to, prior to the July 28th?
The first advertisement will go out on Friday. So we'll have two weeks prior to when it's actually being available, with the nuance that this will be available August 1st. Um, and then the second one will go out after that, so that we have the clock started.
Okay. Um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion's carry. Julia, it's your turn.
Thank you, Walter. We did not have a meeting tonight at the Audit and Finance Committee meeting, uh, but we did the last time, and, um, we did talk about the capital reserve budget. Lot of items, the, um, mainly we are, we were concerned with, um, our taxing situation. Um, we have approval of bills tonight on the agenda. Jared, I don't think you, I didn't see anything unusual that you wanted to report about. And then just give us a brief update on the, where the capital reserve is right now in terms of what's on.
Uh, the capital reserve is, there's a, I mean, it's certainly a solid list of items, of things we've been discussing. A lot of them are, uh, routine items, um, allowing mainly Mr. Woodring and his crew to get a lot of the typical carpet replacement, uh, concrete repair, those type of things done throughout the year. Um, what that allows us to do is not have to come back to the board every time we need something, uh, or he needs something repaired. Um, we will be, I can tell you even, you know, as an example of carpeting, um, he is being very cautious this year on what we get replaced. It has to be, you know, the head custodians from the buildings submit every year, you know, requests of, that they fill what is the worst rooms in their building, um, and then Mr. Woodring reviews that and cuts lists in, in order to save money, because we are trying as a. as a district to save as much capital reserve money as possible to put towards Eisenhower if we need to.
And I think the board's done a pretty good job of being disciplined about this list. We don't want to get too far behind. So we have a bifurcated list, the primaries, the secondaries, and the tertiarys. So I think we, I think you've done a good job keeping us on it, so, Jared.
One question on that, or do you want to wait till after the motions made? Do you want me to ask a question?
This is my report, so if you want to ask me something.
I thought, we had had discussion last building grounds meeting about the junior high pool. And it was, we were advised that the boiler is what I call either deadlined or red tagged or whatever, we're not allowed to use. I thought we were moving that to a number one. I think it's still a number two.
Well, we were going to be checking with the IMCA as well, so we weren't to have a report on that, so we didn't move on that. You weren't going to, you had to make some contact.
Yeah, and Eric and I have.
Certainly can make it a number one. I mean, we will certainly bring, I mean, even if we make it a number one and put it in amount.
Do we have to make it a number one if we want to replace it next month?
We don't. I mean, usually items that large and that singular, like it's a pretty much an item by itself, we can bring it back to the board anyways at some point for approval.
And I know Chaney's working on all that. He called me today and told me about the boiler and then he's, he's getting closer to getting estimates for some of this equipment at the junior high.
Yeah, my heart would be, beat a little rapidly if I thought we were going to do that next month, so I don't think that'll happen, but pools are expensive.
Well, yeah, we're talking, we're talking about a boiler, though.
Yeah.
We're talking about a component of the pool.
It's a component of the pool.
But we also had the leak that I don't think's been solved.
Well, he told me some more stuff about that leak also. They, they filled the pool up again, I guess, and it really didn't leak a whole lot. And it wasn't leaking where it was leaking before, so they did, he did get ahold of Devnor's and they're supposed to come next week to take a look at it.
Yeah, I mean, I'd certainly like to twist the arms to make, to make that pool available for fall.
Well, that's why I brought that up.
No, and I appreciate that. You know, academically, we need that pool back.
And the pool usually, I mean, I'm not saying we won't have it ready for fall, but swimming actually does not typically start until almost November, I believe.
I understand that, but boiler, boiler isn't sitting on the truck somewhere. So if we need a boiler, we need to get it moving.
But, Tom, I also think there's an argument to be made that we're waiting too long to teach these kids to swim.
I agree.
So I would, I, I, I know we're going to look at, or we should be looking at the possibility of getting it back into an earlier age where they're not, you know, there's not such, it's, it's, it's fun. They don't.
We used to teach swimming at third grade, I believe.
Yeah, Mr. Neil and I have, are supposed to meet, we're supposed to connect this week to set up a meeting for next week, so we should be meeting here soon to talk about the possibility of bringing that back.
Okay, good.
Yeah, and then what I don't want to do, though, is I don't want to, I don't want this to be the reason we're not teaching swimming to anybody.
No, I think we need to teach swimming. I think it's about as important as not walking up to strange dogs and touching them or not learning what poison ivy is, I mean, you got to learn to swim. I just think it should happen earlier rather than later. You learn more when you're younger and you learn not to fear it, or fears haven't been built in. The most, is that, so we can move on, the most important part that I wanted to report on is that we've added an addendum to our motions, the tax anticipation loan. And so we have an idea of what we're doing. I think we're, this is an abundance of caution because of Harrisburg, so we don't have a budget and we don't know when we're going to have a budget and they just keep sort of delaying things. I think they're close, but they're now playing, I think, playing around with, did you get it, Pat?
Yeah, there, there was copies already out front.
So we don't want to, we are concerned if we don't have a budget, there's, you know, we could have cash flow issues, so this, this would enable us to have a tax anticipation loan. I doubt we're going to need it. I think they're going to come through and get us a budget because they can't keep this up forever. They got to go back to work and get it done. My understanding is they're in recess. Well, too bad. They need to go back to work. That's my feeling, that's my personal feeling about it. So I will make, so I would, we can talk about it, Jared can go over and just, when I've made the motions, but I would like to move 9.4.
8.4.
8.1, or excuse me, 8.2, 8.3, the capital reserve, and 8.4, the tax anticipation loan.
Second.
Okay.
I don't know if we have to take 8.4 separately. Do you have to have public comment and everything?
We don't have public comment because it was already sitting out front.
Okay, excellent. All right.
Okay, so questions, comments, or discussion on eight, two, three, and four?
I'd like to comment on eight, four. Okay, when Julie says the budget isn't in place, it's the state budget.
The state budget.
The state budget. Our budget's in place. They make us do our budget first and then they do their budget sometime in the next decade. So, so, and the other thing is that if we borrow $5 million in tax anticipation, the state doesn't reimburse us for interest or anything else of the cost of the loan. So, so we get, so we get whacked twice here. Okay, so we're, we operate our budget in a vacuum and then, and if, and if they don't come back and do this budget like they did one year on us, it's just, it's just a crazy way.
I can't imagine a repeat of that because, a few years ago, because it is, it's such a serious issue and I don't think they can wait till September, but we better.
But how, how long are they, did they recess till?
Well, the state senate recessed till the September 1st and the, the president of the state senate does not want to bring them back from recess until after Labor Day, I think you said, or something like that. I could be wrong about that, but.
September 18th.
Yeah, I mean, so this has caused this motion to come up.
In, in theory, we could be without state funding through September the 18th, at least in, in, in theory.
In theory.
The earliest we would have state funding is September 18th.
Correct.
It could be November 15th, just as easily.
Yes.
And, and we would be operating with these funds.
Well, then we ought to, but Jared, you, you have a plan here about, you had, you've talked to the tax collectors and asked for our notices.
Yeah, really, the only, in my opinion, the real need for these funds is just to get us through even the next month and a half until real estate tax money collections have started to come into the district, at which point we would not have a cash flow issue prior to well after the new year. Because even if we do have a state budget, typically in a normal year, if they have it by June 30th, we don't see our first payment from PDE until August 15th. So it, it isn't approved state budget, the next day we're getting funds. It is typically a month and a half till they get everything set up, get all the wording in place. But again, for us as a district, because of our tax collection, we just really needed to get through the next, possibly need that. My hope is, my goal is that we never use it, we don't touch it, but would be to get mainly through till the end of August.
And you have to do it this way. We can't talk to the bank about just taking down the line. Don't we have a line or that, what's that deal we have?
We don't have a lot of, we don't have a lot of credit. It would just be a tax anticipation loan. We did this a couple of years ago when the budget went to, I think, September or October, it was not approved. But again, we didn't need it at the time because not having a state budget doesn't prohibit our real estate tax bills from going out, which should hopefully be going out either by the end of this week or the end of next week.
Do we have any idea what the rate would look like?
I do not, I haven't even, my, my goal would be if this is approved tonight, would be to start reaching out to the banks just to kind of give them a heads up, get an idea of what the rates would be and make sure everything's in place if I need it, so I can get that pretty quickly.
Yeah, we didn't talk about this at committee. This is just, this has been such a surprise, but I certainly think we should do it as abundance of caution. I, I do feel rather confident that Harrisburg is capable of getting its act together on time. I'd like to think so, that our great Commonwealth can do that.
So if they get their act together on time and we don't need to use this, what happens to it?
Nothing. What you're passing tonight is just to allow me to start that process. I would not sign anything or, you know, sign us to anything.
That's the first thing, and then.
We absolutely are in need of some money.
For the public, our general fund, how much is in there?
Our general fund balance at the end of this year is looking to probably be somewhere around $8 million.
Is there a reason why that 8 million couldn't be used to tide us over instead of borrowing money to have to pay interest? Is that money tied up?
It absolutely is being used right now. My biggest concern and the need for this is September 1st is our, is our first debt payment of the year, which is a little, almost is a little over $2 million. So as we're trying to start kicking up payroll for the new year, we're trying to make a debt payment. If we don't have any cash flow and maybe real estate tax collections, we're just starting to get those checks in, that September 1st is really what my concern is, making sure we have enough cash on hand, because the people who we owe for debt payment are not going to care what our cash flow issues are. They're going to want their payment that day regardless, so.
We don't want to default.
No.
But, yeah, I mean.
I mean, we're absolutely, that's why a healthy fund balance is very important. I mean, that it helps us get through these time periods and it does in a normal year because like I said, even if we have a June 30th budget, our first basic debt payment typically does not come in until August 15th. So we usually go a month and a half using fund balance regardless.
Okay.
Okay, further questions, comments, or discussion on these three items?
I just think it's kind of ironic that the same people that make laws that require our board to have a budget on time, don't require themselves to have a budget on time. We're mandated to have a budget on time. What about the state? Why don't they have a budget on time? You need to pass your own laws to mandate yourself to have a budget on time, too. I mean, we're fine, we have a little bit of money, but what about these poor school districts that have no money, that don't have this capital sitting there? What are they going to do? Shut down? Close, run the buses?
There'll be more of these tax anticipation loans.
I think they do have a law, they just don't follow it.
Yeah. It's just not right.
If they're too far indebted, they're, they're going to pay a higher rate, so it's very unfair.
Sure.
Point we'll take on. Anything else? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motions carry. Okay, we do have one discussion item. Rob, I think this is your, your item.
Yes, sir. I just want to update the board on, and the community on the Act, or the 21st Century Grant. 21st Century Grant is what the funds are after school programs and our summer program. And it's a partnership that is owned, it's owned by the federal government and it's given to Aaron IU as the manager of that grant. We are a partner in that, in that grant with Aaron and along with Homer Center. The federal oversight that has come and evaluated there, our program that we're working on with Aaron, has decided, as recommended and actually kind of mandated, that we reduce the number of sites we have for our after school program. I have to sign an agreement letter that the board has already authorized me to sign in this partnership. However, I did want to let you know that when we sign that, that we are going to be reducing the number of sites. Now, it's important to note that we're not going to be reducing the opportunity. All those students that could go to this program will still be able to go to the program. It might just not be at the same site they went to last year. For example, the junior high site is the one that is, had the least number of students enrolled because they're junior high kids, they're starting to get involved in other extracurricular activities, they're a little bit less interested in, in after school stuff like this, and their parents, the parents don't necessarily need a, need the after school care. So those numbers were the lowest. That site will no longer operate and those students will participate in a site at Horace Mann. It's simply a measure by that, by the federal program to reduce the staff cost that have the small site numbers.
So this is, this is after school tutoring and so forth?
Correct. Same after school program will be offered, same tutoring will be offered, different location.
Are we comfortable with allowing students who need tutoring to say, no, I'm going to get involved in these other activities? Should, should we not put some kind of like athletic eligibility thing in the, in the place that you've got a seventh grader who has no, no ability, is having super problems in math.
Sure.
But wants to take off and do, I don't know.
Whatever else.
Cross country or whatever else. Is, can, can we not do something like that?
I don't think we can ever mandate.
Has it that time to have kids not getting any?
We can't, we can never mandate after school tutoring, however, we definitely can put pressure and recommendations on. The principals do a nice job. They always look at their data with their data teams and any students that are falling below that line, get a special invitation, those parents get an invitation, hey, this, we have this after school tutoring, you could sign your kid up for and, you know, we can get them back on track. So they're always reaching out to them and we do have an athletic eligibility piece to that already that, you know, if you're not meeting the grade, you can't participate in extracurriculars. So, so we can, but we can definitely use that as leverage for some of these things.
Yeah.
Yeah, but the, the junior high program fluctuated between, you know, just a few kids to, you know, maybe a dozen at one point, but it averaged like four students that were coming on a regular basis. So it was just not cost effective to the grant, so they're going to just take the same staff and condense it to one site. So we're just going to transport those students. We have a bus that goes down there anyway. You know, Mrs. Eisenman and Mr. Bowers are going to have to find a place for those students to be at Horace Mann while that site, you know, while that, because there'll, there'll be some junior high kids in the Horace Mann building while they're still Horace Mann students there. So we'll have to do a little logistic work to get them with those 21st century people out of the way, but it's not a, it's not a tremendous task. That's it. I just want to make sure you got, that everyone understood because, you know, because it was going to affect some of the after school program, I want to make sure that everyone understood that this is something we've already agreed to participate in, we're going to continue the partnership, it's just going to look slightly differently this coming year.
Very good, very good. Any more questions for Rob? Okay, is there any public comment on agenda items? Nothing heard? Did anybody raise their hand? Okay, we had some closures this evening. We also, excuse me, had an executive session. That executive session covered some personnel issues, including a couple of the motions that were passed tonight. There's also some litigation with the Eisenhower insurance settlement and some right away issues and some issues with a potential bus contract. Our next board meeting will be at August the 14th at 7:00 PM for general purposes. Our next committee meetings will be academic and extracurricular there on August the 7th at 5:30. Policy and Personnel, August the 14th at 5:30. Also, we are going to go into executive session immediately after this and it will be for discussion of personnel matters. We will not come out of the executive session back into a regular session. So basically, once we adjourn here, the meeting will be, will be over for this evening.
One other quick thing that I mentioned, Oliver.
Yes.
The, going back to the state budget a little bit, some of the, or some of the news reports were talking about that they were trying to re-implement Plan Con. So I'd ask Jared to reach out to the, his counter or his contact, PSBA.
PASMA.
PASMA. And, and it's too early to tell, especially with the budget not being signed and finalized and all that stuff, so it was just an inquiry.
Very good. One more note on the schedule, sir. We're hoping that those meetings in August will be back at the regular building at the central administration, however, that's contingent on the progress of the construction, so.
We love those.
We do, we do love your hospitality, Mr. McLean, I appreciate it, but.
Yeah, I mean, mechanically, the only thing that would be better is if you have a coffee bar.
Yes.
In the fall.
Okay, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So will we.